Okay, folks, I'd like to call the 2024 organizational meeting to order. Do we not take roll call for the organizational meeting?
Well, I just gotta swear people in first.
Okay. Mr. Ingles, will you please administer the oath of office to Mr. Votol, myself, and Mr. Hooly?
Yeah. Raise your right hands. Be after me.
Do we stand up?
If you want.
Okay. Sure.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Jonathan Alder Local School District, Madison County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office, to your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is I do.
I do.
I do. Good. Thank you, guys.
Next, roll call, please, Mr. Ingles.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes, here.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes, here.
Mr. McCartney.
Present.
Mr. Votol. Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Next, can we stand to say the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, can I get a moment for silent prayer and meditation, please? Thank you. 2.01, can I get a motion to approve the organizational meeting agenda for January 8, 2024, as presented?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Can I get a nomination for president for the 2024 school year?
Sonia Walker.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can I get, roll call, please, sorry.
All right, motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so go ahead and have a... Yeah, motion to approve Sonia, or Mrs. Walker, as board president for 2024?
Oh, you do not. Roll call, please.
There we go.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
I'm staying.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. Detwiler.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you.
Do you want to change seats?
Sure.
Okay. Moving on to 3.03, nominations for vice president. Can I get a motion to accept nominations for the position? No? How about?
I move that Bill McCartney, vice president.
Okay, second.
Correct. Can I get a motion to approve the nomination of Bill McCartney?
Close the motion. Close nominations.
This is fun. I'm gonna close the nominations, okay?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so Mr. McCartney, Mrs. Detwiler. Okay.
Now, can I get a motion to accept the nomination of Bill McCartney for vice president?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ready for roll call?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
All right, let's just Mr. McCartney.
Okay, thank you. Section four, board president's comments. Well, thank you, all of you, for nominating me and Bill. Since joining the board, I've really had a great working relationship with everybody. I've been really impressed about the time and the effort that everybody has put into this board. I have witnessed many times people come with one opinion and have that opinion changed because we're all open to hearing everybody's ideas. Everybody takes and looks for information well. It's been quite a privilege. So I just thank you for entrusting me in this position. I hope I serve you all well, the students, the teachers, the administrators, the district, and I look forward to working even more closely with Dr. Miller. So, thank you all.
Excellent.
Okay, moving on to section five, board member committee assignments. These assignments, some of them changed with Bruce now on the board, which I failed to say. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
And glad to have you guys back.
Thank you.
Steve and Bill. We added Bruce into the mix, and he will be joining me on the Board Policy and Review Committee. These are just changes. Bruce and Erica will now be serving on the Technology Committee, and Erica is taking over my place on the District Insurance Committee, and the Negotiations Board Representatives will be myself and Mr. McCartney. Moving on to section six, the Agenda Meeting and Notification Procedures. Those are all listed in the agenda. If you want to learn any more information about how the meetings are set up, the notice requirements, please refer to the agenda. And section seven is establishing the board meeting dates, times, and locations for 2024 calendar year. Can I get a motion to approve the board meetings' dates and times and location as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooly.
Mr. Hooly, yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes. Can I, motion carries?
January of, oh, this is January 24, nevermind.
Isn't on there? We're at it. Right. Section eight, can I get a motion to approve the authorization of treasurer to pay bills, request for advances, requests for advances in tax settlements, and invest funds as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is basically giving Mr. Ingles the ability to do his job.
Pretty much.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Excellent, motion carries. And section 9.01, can I get a motion to approve the resolutions to conduct business of district operations for the calendar year 2024 as presented? I get a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hooly. Well, similarly, this gives both Mr. Ingles and Dr. Miller the ability to run our district and make decisions while the board is not in session. Roll call.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Excellent, motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn my first meeting that I've run ever? The organizational meeting? We could start afresh here in a minute?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Okay, so that means adjourned, and move on to the next one.
Excellent, welcome, everybody. I would like to call to order the January 8, 2024, regular board meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Here. Mr. Votol.
Here.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. McCartney.
Present.
Motion carries. Section 12.01, can I have a motion to approve the January 8, 2024, agenda for the Jonathan Alder Regular Board Meeting?
So moved. A second.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes. Motion carries. And 13.01, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 11, 2023, regular board meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Votol.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. And...
Would you like to move to the superintendent report? I'd like to make a few announcements out of bias a little bit of time because our person we're recognizing is not here yet, and our person I think is here.
Okay. So, moving on to section 17, or no, no.
Number 17, let's try this.
Is there any public...
There have not been any, no.
We're okay.
Myron's here right now.
We can, we can give him a minute, do the superintendent's report. Okay, moving on, we're gonna skip ahead to section 18, and we'll go back to 14.
Okay. Are you gonna jump to 17 real fast?
Yep, we'll take a second to get settled, and then we'll bring you right up. Thank you. Each January is school board appreciation, if you guys weren't aware. There's a couple signs here prepared for you behind you here and on the screen, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank our school board members, your commitment, your devotion, your willingness to listen to our staff, the administrators, our students, and just do whatever it takes for our students of Jonathan Alder. Just can't thank you enough for all that you do, your service and your support. I also wanted to congratulate Mrs. Walker on school board president. I can already assure you that this organizational meeting went a lot smoother than last year, 2023. Mr. McCartney, it's been a pleasure meeting you as vice president. Congratulations on that vice chair. I had a young lady that I wanted to recognize, she's not with us this evening, but we'll bring her in in a month or so, a senior here at the high school, Evan Platt, who she's our latest CBC Student Athlete of the Month. She's an outstanding basketball and softball player. She should be commended for her athletic success. She's a three-time all-conference, three-time all-district, and two-time all-state, so we'll bring her in here in the next couple months, but I wanted to publicly congratulate her. And that is it for my report. Thank you.
Mr. McCartney with 18.02, tolls report?
Nothing to report at the moment.
Well, that didn't take a lot of time.
Mrs. Walker, I'm sorry, there was one other piece that I have here, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I wanted to thank Mr. Hooly and welcome you to the board. Sorry that I missed you on this. I knew there was one other piece I had. Over the last couple months, getting to know you, the conversations that we've had, the drive, I've just learned your commitment and your willingness to listen and learn, see the progress that's already in place, and just be part of the team that we have in place. So I welcome you and I thank you, and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with the board and with you and with Mark, and I've been just continually impressed, blown away by everyone that I've met in administration, teachers. The spirit in the district is amazing and really look forward to serving.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mast, are you ready?
Mr. Mast, I'm ready.
Okay, so 15.01, Mr. Myron Mast has reached out to the board. We're happy to have him here to share information about new development. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Pleased to all of you. I recognize a few faces around here. Just talked to you on the phone, Jim, I think. Nice to meet you. Thanks for being here. And, well, thank you for asking, welcoming me in. Steve Votol, we go back many years to when our sons were in Little League.
Yes.
And they were part of a team that was, I think, 13 and 1 as Little Leaguers, and my son would say it was the best time of his life. It was a good experience, so we go way back. I know Erica and some of, and Bill, I talked to you all on the phone. And is it Stephanie?
Sonia.
Sonia. And Mr. Hooly, I have not met, but I hope to get, learn to know you folks in the future. What I've got here is things that I think a lot of people have a lot of questions on. We were not, we heard rumblings about this for quite some time, that things are happening, and people would ask, "Do you know anything about it?" "No, we don't know anything about it." "No, we don't know anything about it." And then I was invited to go to a meeting with the county commissioners, the regional planning commission, et cetera, and the Montrose Group was there. You may be familiar with the Montrose Group. They've been working with Plain City on future development, as well as the Madison County Commissioners. And they're looking at the corridor along 161, all the way out to Kyleville. And when they invited us into the meeting, it was just because we were trustees, and all the trustees of Madison County were involved. And then I finally spoke up and I said, "Why is it that we don't know more or hear more of what's happening?" And then at that point, why, there was a little more communication that started happening, started getting invited to a few mid-Ohio water and sewer district meetings, which I've only been to one. I have to meet to another one tomorrow. And then through that, we started hearing more of what may be happening along the 161 corridor. It's usually, it seems like, when people come into our township or what have you, it's not uncommon for the local people to come to see us and say, "Hey, we want to do this with our property." And we hear them, and we usually don't try to fight against our taxpayers that want to do something with their property. With this scenario and a number of, a few other scenarios, like the cricket organization that's out of 161, we were never contacted with any of that. So we were sort of in the dark, like the regular taxpayer was. And then I finally get a phone call asking, "Would you be willing to meet with the Schottensteins Real Estate Group?" The Schottensteins Real Estate Group is a pretty broad group. I think there's about five different entities. And, but this is the real estate group, and they're really interested in the 253 acres along the... They're really interested in 253 acres there in Kyleville. And I went to the Madison County Engineers Office, and I was hoping to get larger mappings for you folks. And they didn't have, the map was, or the printer was broke down, but I was able to get the smaller ones. So initially, when they talk about 253 acres, you see that in the yellow. Okay? But then the awareness needs to be developed that there, or come to mind that there's more in the offing. If you notice, if you see the blue, some of that is where the Cricket Company is.
Myron, is the, is, is the Wood Place, the lumberyard, is that basically at the corner of the yellow and the green?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're correct, it is. And, and then here comes the orange along, and you see that that comes right off of Cemetery Road and 161, and it goes to the first road left. If you get on Cemetery Road, it's Eames Road. And it starts down Eames Road. And we were not aware of much of any of that at all, but, but there's stuff in the incubator, apparently. And again, I don't know what may be in the incubator. I'm not sure. But I thought to myself, I saw this map four weeks ago, and I asked the individual that showed it to me, I said, "Can you send this to me?" And I saw hesitance, and then I said, "Maybe put you on Front Street for that. Maybe I should hold off." And then here, Dave Kell, the county administrator, sent it to me this three days ago, two, three days ago. So I thought I would put it in this presentation just for awareness for you folks. Even though I don't have an answer for what all is being talked about in the blue or the orange, most of the awareness I have is what's in the yellow. That's being looked at as 500 and some odd apartments. And when you look at apartments in the broad picture, that's considered commercial.
So, okay, because, and this is separate from, this is separate from the 600 units that Shreg is doing at Col Warner and 161? Is that right?
I'm...
In Jerome Township?
Yeah, this is separate from that.
So how much of this land has been purchased already by the Schottensteins Real Estate Group? Just the yellow or all of it?
All I know is it's in contract. So I can't answer whether it's really purchased.
Is this the Noah Beach, what they refer to as the Noah Beachy Farm?
No.
I don't believe so.
No, this is separate.
So this is not the area that Fisher Homes is planning?
No, that's different. Fisher Homes is different. That's down between Cemetery Road and 161. And if you want an understanding about how some of those things work, if there's a owner, a property owner, that wants to come and annex into Plain City, they do not need to talk to the township. All they have to do is go directly to the municipality, and they can make that request.
Does, does the, this, this map suggest that the Plain City service area for sewer and water goes all the way to the corner of Cemetery Pike and 161?
It doesn't yet.
It doesn't yet, but that's...
What they're looking at, that's where it's wrinkled in all this, is because they want to start development with this if everybody can come to agreement. Then Marysville Sewer and Water would come up Warner Road, provide water and sewer for them so they can start. And then in five to six years, when mid-Ohio Sewer and Water comes down 42 and ties in with Plain City, then it would go out 161, tie into this apartment complex, reverse the flow, and have all this head towards London.
How many units are we talking about in this apartment complex?
500 and so. So, that being said, when I heard this, I, you know, I really started thinking, and I think that puts somewhat of a concern factor in for you guys as well. How do we cover, when you realize all the developments are going in around Plain City, how many children is that gonna be? And then I have a friend of mine that's a commissioner in Union County, and he called me. He said, "Myron, I think you need to talk to our administrator in Union County." So we talked about six hours at length. I think I told you that, Jim, and I think I told Bill that as well. And we talked long and hard about that. It's on a complex on, all of a sudden, the road, it's just the road the other side of Route 33 if you go underneath Route 33 on 161. High Land Croy. There's an apartment complex out there. And there was speculation the Schottensteins Group went into that and did that, and they had assured an X amount of children would be coming, probably coming out of that complex. But they were wrong. And that was in a TIP agreement. So the school district lost some of their funding. TIP agreement is supposed to go to infrastructure. But what was happening, and the reason Union County sued Jerome Township, was because this TIP agreement money was reimbursing the Schottensteins Group for water and sewer tap fees. It wasn't going to infrastructure, but they were calling that infrastructure. And what happened, it ended up, the Dublin School District, really, once a person looks at it, they're, they were in arrears of almost, I believe it was close. If you're looking at $12,000 a year per child, it was close to 1.4 million that they were in arrears for with this...
Well, not in arrears, they just behind.
They never sold the tax dollars.
Yeah, yeah, right.
They never sold the tax dollars. So that, that in a sense is arrears, if I would think of, you know, they weren't getting it. It was going somewhere else. That is one of the reasons Union County sued Jerome Township. And, and as I heard that, I thought, "We as a township do not want to do the same mistake to our school district." Does that make sense?
Yes, sure.
And for me, that's a concern for all of, for the whole district. Because if you look on the second page, what I've got there, and I apologize for, for having a less clear document there. My copying and my pasting is at risk, but it's there. Here I have, "We as trustees have questions, and we express interest in your concerns and questions as well." And I have there townships, existing residents, taxpayers, Johnson Alder District, and Pleasant Valley Fire District. On the other side there, I have different agreements that we've been encouraged to look at. One is the TIP agreement, the other's a JED, and the other's a new community authority. As I looked into the new community authority agreement, it requires, I think, a little over, at least 1,000 acres, and this is only 253 acres if you look on the mapping. So, at the present time, we've been inquiring with our attorney and saying, "What can we do?" What our hopes are, as we move forward with this, is that whatever agreements that are made, that the realis, whoever it is, where, even if it isn't Schottensteins, whoever it is, that it doesn't cost the rest of the township and the school district money. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
We really would ask that. That would be our preference.
What's that?
That would be our preference, too.
So where are we, where are we in the process of this being a done deal? So where are we, where are we in the process of this being a done deal, or this being subject to approval?
It's not a done deal yet.
Well, so.
Are we at step one of ten, are we at step eight of ten, or where are we in?
I'm still trying to find that out.
Who has the ultimate authority on throwing the green light on this? Your township trustees or the Madison County Commissioners?
Well, my response to that is, at this point, up until about a month ago, the only communication that was happening was, would be between Schottenstein's Real Estate Group and the Commissioners, and then, and Dave Kell, Rob Slane.
So I ask, so I'm just curious, like, what authority do the trustees have in, let's just envision, if the Schottenstein Real Estate Group wants to make, wants to seek the approval of the Madison County Commissioners, can they, do they need the approval of Darby Township Trustees to gain that approval? Or can they do that apart from your blessing, the association?
My, well, that's a good question, because my question to the Commissioners was, why isn't the township being communicated with if it's going to end up in the township? Why, why, why are we being bypassed?
So on the last page of the document that you provided, there's a twenty twenty-two comp plan that you have?
Yeah.
And so, I believe that the township would have approved this comp plan. And in the, if I'm, if I'm, I'm not by no means an expert, but we've dealt with Jerome Township a lot. So my understanding is that because this area that you're talking about, you guys have as a planned commercial district, any developer, or anybody that would purchase land within these districts, so right now, if you look in the comp plan, uh, the planned commercial district, anything that would, if, if, if somebody would buy land, and it would fall within that district, they can do whatever they want, as long as it complies with the comp plan. And so, you've already tacitly given your approval that in this comp plan area, or in this commercial district area, you've already, the township's already outlined what, what is acceptable to happen in that district.
That is correct.
Okay.
But one thing that hasn't been agreed on is TIPS, JEDs.
Sure, sure.
Et cetera.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? And what I was alarmed with was, I don't want those agreements taking place without our knowledge.
Yeah, so that's gonna be a.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's gonna be a struggle. And you, you should look to what has been going on with Jerome Township and Union County as an example of one entity trying to usurp the other. And it sounds, I mean.
Sounds daunting.
It sounds daunting, and I would, I would try to form a partnership with Madison Town, Madison County as quickly as possible.
Well, this is what I'm doing right now. And I agree with you, Bill. Yeah, I do. When I was talking with Bill Narducci of Union County, his thought was, Myron, I'm concerned that it doesn't happen to Darby Township what has happened in Jerome Township.
Sure.
You guys probably know more about that than I do.
We do.
In all truth and fairness.
Unfortunately.
You know?
And we, we were constantly being put in the middle, being asked to essentially pick, are we going to mom's house or dad's house?
Yeah.
For, as, as it pertains to tax agreements.
Yeah.
That's way outside the scope of our expertise.
All mine.
And quite frankly, we, it, there was a steep learning curve for us to get brought up to speed on exactly what this means. And I don't, I think we have a pretty good understanding today, but, I mean, we're, again, we're certainly no experts.
Neither am I.
And Myron, one of the things that really, really encourages is that no matter whether it's a TIP or a payment or anything, you can hold schools harmless. And so that, that you can hold schools harmless in a TIP, so that schools get all their tax dollars, and the rest of the TIP money goes to roads and that.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. But you can actually hold schools harmless.
You're correct. I just found out about that, what was it, a week and a half ago? And that's why I tagged in on the second page there, on tax increment financing, schools being kept hold.
Yes. We strongly encourage that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I do too. I guess what I'm trying to come up with, I went to the county commissioners, and wait, I, let me back up a little bit, when I was talking with the Montrose Group. And I need to be careful how I say that, this, I'm a pastor. Okay, I stand behind a pulpit. And I proclaim the word of God. But I told them, I get the feeling like Darby Township is ripe for raping, robbing, and pillaging. And I said, I get the feeling like we're supposed to accept this. And I said, I'm not prepared to accept it. I said, we want to know what's happening and what's going on. I'll be honest with you, Bill, I don't know much about TIPS, JEDs, and all that, new community authorities. I'm learning on the run. But we've hired an attorney. I think we have the second one, maybe, on board that we're trying to get to help us.
Are they experts in?
They're supposed to be.
Who is it, do you mind?
Uh, Tom Springs. And then another man by the name of Chris Connolly, we've been communicating with. But one thing, we're, we have a question on with Chris Connolly. I just found out this past week that he had some communications and some workings with Madison County. So we may have to look elsewhere. So, but it's Tom Springs. Tom Springs was, he's a, an attorney that, I like how he functions. He's been straightforward as far as on, on procedure. And I like how he's handling things, so, uh, but I'm, if you would ask me, are you under contract with Chris Connolly? No, we're not. But we've been, and, and if you guys have concerns, we would like to hear them.
I have several.
Yeah.
First of all, let me say, I appreciate you coming and keeping us informed. I appreciate your humility in saying that this is a complex issue, and you don't profess to be an expert on it, nor am I. But just as a resident of this area, in this particular township, I just bring these things up to hopefully, uh, build out some of your knowledge and some of my concerns as a school board member, and my concerns as a resident. First and foremost would be, like, the residents of this area have no idea this is coming. I thought this was about the Fisher Homes development, which I have strenuous concerns about. As someone who tries to make their way to thirty-three in the morning at eight AM, there's a train that goes through Kyleville almost every day at seven fifteen AM. Traffic backs up toward Plain City all the way to Cemetery Pike. It backs up the other direction to Hootchard from the railroad track. If you add three hundred and seventy-seven more Fisher Homes in the first development, and five hundred apartments, without expanding one sixty-one, without buildings, without accommodating something for rail that will not inconvenience or stop drivers, that's just a completely untenable situation.
As a matter of information, are you aware that the property that's purchased just on the other side of Kyleville Elevator that's targeted as a possible Amtrak site?
So one other thing that I would say, by way of, by way of educating you, and I mean that not in a, that you're not educated on it, I'm just saying, there's a term that we've thrown around, because particularly because you're a pastor, they'll throw around a term at you, and doctors will throw around a term at you to play on your humility. And the term is affordable housing. And you'll be told that Plain City and Dublin don't have enough affordable housing. Well, there are three communities that they ding for a lack of affordable housing. New Albany, Dublin, and Upper Arlington. Affordable housing would, to me, imply that in those three areas, if the housing were not affordable, there would be vast swatches of uninhabited real estate. That is not the case in New Albany, Dublin, or Upper Arlington. Somebody can afford those homes. And the people who can afford those homes are people who have achieved an economic level of success, which brings with it a certain pride of ownership, and most likely, not in all cases, but most likely, a respect for the laws of our country and a respect for the privacy of the individual. That is not true in a lot of areas of Columbus where they have affordable housing. So be aware that the term affordable housing will be thrown at you as a way to make you feel bad about insisting on a certain kind of additional development happening in the Jonathan Alder School District.
Well, that brings up another question about affordable housing, what is affordable? Two, progress. That word is thrown out all the time, progress. What are we progressing towards? That's, that's a question that some people don't want to answer when you ask that in return. What are we progressing, progressing towards? And I'm not against fut- uh, people, farmers that are retired and are looking to move on, and they sell their property. Uh, I'm not, yeah, there's, that's outside of my realm of control. It's all right. Where I have a concern about affordability and progress is, one, I'm not convinced that we really understand the word affordable. And that's a term that is open to interpretation, depending on where you are at in life. Very, very wide open. So what is affordable? What are we progressing towards? And, uh, the other side of the spectrum is many of the people that are doing this don't live here. They don't live here. Uh, and we do. So as far as me having lots of power, Mr. Hooly, I don't. But I believe we can, I can be a voice. And that's why I've been going to the Commissioners' meetings every Tuesday morning for the last six weeks, because I want them to know I care. Go ahead.
Yeah, Myron, I, I might suggest, and I, I get, it's just a suggestion, I mean, we've been, we've been able to develop a very good working relationship with the village over this growth. We've started meeting with them on a regular basis, started talking about the implications for the growth, how it's going to affect our village, soon to be a city, how it's going to affect us as a schools. And maybe we should look at kind of a similar thing with Madison County and Darby Township. Again, maybe there's, we should be meeting on a more regular basis with our township and with our County Commissioners, and on top of what's going on. I mean, I think it's really benefited us from, and improved our relationship with the village, which has been as strong as it's ever been. And, and maybe it's a way to kind of make sure that we're all getting the same information and the right information so that we can make decisions. Again, I don't know if that's an option, but it certainly has worked well with the village thus far.
No, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. In fact, that was one reason I came to you folks, is because I want to establish that relationship. Darby Township wants to establish that relationship with you guys. Up to, it was only a little over three years ago that I became a trustee. And the way I became a trustee was because I got a phone call saying, would you consider filling a seat? Well, I like the community. I like people. I like coaching Little League, Steve. Yeah?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Uh, and then, it was just three months ago, I think, two or three months ago, Roger piped up, and he says, Myron, in twenty-some years, we've never experienced this. It was quiet, it was peaceful, it was calm. You know? And all of a sudden, this is happening. So, uh, so again, uh, I appreciate anything that we can, uh, any relationship that we can create, working together. I mean, now, it's not my children attending Jonathan Alder, it's my grandchildren. You know? So whatever we can do, and I would really like to, I think you guys, I, I got, I sensed there's some concerns when I brought up a name. Whatever concerns you'd have, I'd like to be aware of this, be familiar, have an understanding. All truth and fairness, I'm serious.
I'll have a conversation with you, but not in a public forum.
That's all right.
To what, to whatever extent you have, um, the ability as a township trustee group to insist on a traffic study and the ramifications of this kind of development in advance of the development being cleared? I'm not sure if you have, I'm not sure if you have the ability to insist upon that kind of a traffic study.
I'll do an inquiry on that, but I believe the county has done that. But that doesn't mean that it's.
I mean, it's just to me, it's insane that we would build homes or anything eighty feet from one sixty-one while we're two-lane route.
Yeah. Yeah. I believe they've done that traffic study. Just as a matter of information, they're looking at doing a roundabout here, just down here at Cayman Communities, I mean Cayman, uh, School. I think it's on forty-two, I believe it's maybe this coming year or the following year.
Well, you might, you know, the, the direction to at least look, I'd look at the, like, were you aware that the, that area was a planned commercial district?
Well, I was aware that we, we had want, desired to make a commercial corridor alongside one sixty-one.
Okay.
Within one thousand feet each way.
Okay.
That was a target.
But down Imes, that was not?
That was, that was, there was no awareness for us for that.
Well, but the thing, the, the reason, oh, is this, is this a Madison County comp plan, or, or a, is this a Madison County comp plan, or a Darby Township comp plan?
The first map here is not a comp plan.
No, I'm sorry, the final page, the last page.
That's a Madison County comp plan.
Does, does Darby Township have a comp plan?
Well, they would say that's our comp plan.
Did you approve it? Did you approve it?
We were in the meetings for it. Do you understand how that works?
I see how that works.
Yeah.
So you might, I, 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 my advice to you, I think the only measure of control you have is a comp plan. And so, it, it, you know, my recommendation, I'd be on the, I'd be on the horn asking a lawyer about, you know, what can we do about a comp plan that, you know, was this comp plan done to us, or is, or do we have any control over this comp plan?
I've done inquiring about apartments and a comp plan, the commercial aspect.
Well, it'll, it'll count as commercial because it's a, it's apartment complex. And so.
And since the comp plan's in place, it's really hard to reverse that.
After, after they've purchased it, but if you, if you're able to change a comp plan before any transactions happen.
But what would we change it to?
I, that's a Darby Township question, I'm not sure.
It's not my question. What would we change it to?
I don't know.
It's a question for your attorney.
Or, it would be, it would.
It's basically PID, Plant Industrial Development, Residential, Agriculture, Comp One, Comp Two.
Well, I'd say it'd be a question for your residents. What do your residents want it to see, want to see it be? Right?
Okay, so how do I respond to the farmer that says I want to sell the land?
This is why you get paid the big bucks as a trustee.
I can resign tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I know.
But what I'm saying is, we're going to do a town hall.
Yeah.
We're planning to do a town hall in February to bring in awareness to everyone in the township. To anyone that's interested.
Yeah, being a decision maker, it's, it's tough, because.
It's hard.
Because you're gonna, you know, like you said, you got family land. Grandpa's getting out, he wants to sell, he wants to dole money out to the kids, you're gonna tell him no? You know, uh, we've kind of been back and forth. him no, you know? We've kind of been back and forth with the solar issue, kind of a similar concept of, you know, somebody benefits and somebody else is harmed. And so, it's tough, it's, you're in for making some tough decisions.
There's no doubt about that. But I think...
With farmland going for $15,000 an acre, I said with farmland going for $15,000 an acre in some cases, you're not, you're not keeping a farmer from cashing out.
Right now, you're looking at 60,000 to 70,000 an acre.
In commercial, yeah.
In commercial.
I'm saying at minimum, $15,000 an acre.
Farm, farm ground agriculture, yes. But if it's looking at commercial, 60,000 to 70,000 dollars an acre, maybe more.
I get it, but I'm guaranteeing you that whoever's selling that land, they didn't pay $15,000 an acre for. If they have to sell it for $15,000 an acre, they're still making a tidy profit and being respectful of their neighbors, Julie.
Mr. Mass, I can't thank you enough for coming in. You've started the open line of communication. My office door is always open to you. If we can continue forming this relationship, at any time, if you're working with the attorneys on any type of taxing agreement, please keep us, inform Mark Ingles and I will be with you at any time.
And I'd like to, I left my phone number at the bottom for any of you that have concerns.
I have one question for you. Are you here at the behest of the other two trustees as well?
I called Roger, our chairman, and I told him I'm coming.
Okay. Do they support, do they support your endeavors in this matter?
Yes. There's concern about it as I am.
Okay.
I'm not running out on this alone.
That makes it, if you're unified, that makes it a whole lot easier.
Yeah.
Well, on behalf of the board, thank you for taking the time to come in today and talk to us, bring this to our attention, and hopefully we can form a working relationship and...
I hope, I look forward to it. And we look forward to it, really. I just felt like it was critical, important, and I also let the county commissioners know that I'm coming.
Good.
I told them I'm coming. I told Dave Kelber I'm coming. So, so yeah, it's open across the board, but I appreciate it. I hope it was informative.
Very. Thank you, Mr. Mass. Okay, moving on to Section 14, commendations. Dr. Miller?
Mrs. Tammy Robinson, come on up. I'd love to recognize you.
As long as you're not firing me. I'll tell you, that email's the big lights out of me.
Let me just, let me just share with the board how special of an employee you are.
This whole board knows how special she is.
We know.
You guys already know.
We know.
No, read it.
You don't have to read it.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, you ready? Mrs. Tammy Robinson elevates our department within the district by doing anything she's asked to do without complaint at any time of any day. If you are having a bad day, you can always count on Tammy to show up with words of encouragement or just a hug with no words spoken to lift your spirits. Tammy is one of the reasons the Transportation Department runs so smoothly. She will always jump behind the wheel, no questions asked, when we are in a bind. She is kind and compassionate to our students. She always has a kind word for her fellow drivers. She is dependable as the sunrise each morning. Tammy's role is one of the most important roles in the district, along with every bus driver's. She is the first to greet our pioneers in the morning and the last face they will see before they go home. She goes above and beyond to make her students feel welcome and valued. She cares for all the students and people that she interacts with on a daily basis. Tammy is extremely appreciated within the Jonathan Alder Transportation Department. Tammy always goes above and beyond to make sure the students in our district are our top priority and they get to where they need to be safely. Tammy comes to work every day with a positive attitude and willing to help out wherever she is needed. If I am struggling to get sporting event trips covered, Tammy will offer to double up and spend the whole day on the road, dropping off and picking up at different schools. Tammy is always there to listen and try to lift your spirits. If you hurt, she hurts for you. Outside of work, Tammy is always spreading her kindness. Tammy does what she does, not for the recognition, but because she has a loving, caring heart and just wants people to be happy. She's a true blessing to anyone that knows her. You can find Tammy volunteering anywhere in the community. It doesn't matter if Tammy's working, driving her students or athletes, attending games, volunteering, working the events, tickets, score clock, and so much more. Whatever it is, she puts her heart into it. When asked, why does she do what she does? And she answered, because this and these are my family. Thank you for all that you do. We're gonna do a photo op right here, and I just can't take it up for how you take care of our kids.
I love you, God. You did this. I love you too.
All right, here we go, in three, two... Got it.
Thank you, thank you. Anytime.
If everyone agrees with you.
They're over, they're a button.
Thanks for allowing me to share.
You're welcome. I think, we all know people who, no matter when you bring up their name or to whom you bring them up, the reaction is always positive. And Tammy, you're one of those people. I have never brought up your name without hearing the most shining, the most glowing, the most loving things, and that's because you are who you are, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I, oh, thank you. I don't know what to say.
You didn't bring your speech?
No. I like said, I was worried, I saw the email and I didn't read the recognized part. All I saw was come to the board meeting and I called Misty. I said, what did I do? I mean, I'm scared to death. And she said, Tammy, did you read the whole email? And I'm like, I don't know. I went back and read, it said, recognize. I said, recognize I did what? I mean, I'm scared to death.
Well, you're...
But thank you.
You're getting recognized for being you.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tammy.
I gotta get my little one home here to, to her mother for dinner. We'll take a picture after, Ben. But thank you.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, we, I think we mentioned, public comments, Tyler? None? Great. Thank you. All right, moving on to 17 Treasurers Reports. Would we take off 17.02?
Well, we did, and then got renumbered. So the grants was 1703...
Now it's 17.02? Okay.
And this is a consent agenda item, so...
So I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve 17.01, December financials, and 17.02, grants and donations.
Salute.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just really wanna just point out quick, you guys do have the financials in your packets. Overall, we're still looking strong for the fiscal year. Right now, we have a small deficit, and fiscal year is a date, but this month, we're gonna have our school district income tax revenues plus our first half tax revenues coming in, property tax wise. So this should, could bring us back in the black in no time. I do wanna talk a little bit about the donation we received. It's $400 from an anonymous donor to a Food Services Department, and that was to wipe away the lunch debt for our students. Generosity of our community is greatly appreciated, and such a move by allowing more students to eat and not have to worry about the debt increases our participation and in turn, you know, does impact our bottom line in the Food Service Department. So that keeps that department self-sustaining and healthy and doesn't require our support from the general fund. So that donation does pay dividends in a lot of different ways, so I wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And to whoever you are, I know this isn't the first time, this is someone, an anonymous community member, benefactor has come in before, we really appreciate you. Thank you very much for helping out not only the district, but the families in our community. So, any other discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Section 19, can I get a motion to approve 19.01, 19.02, and 19.03?
Salute.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the personnel consent items? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to Section 20, Old Business. 20.01 is the second reading of Policies 4433 and 5112. Again, these were addition and revisions that took out a line to make it clearer on holidays in, I think that was 4433. And then, the proof of identification and residency requirement for enrolling children in our district per the recommendation of the Department of Education. That was 5112. So that's a second reading. And also a second reading on the school calendars. That would be Section 20.02 for the 2024, 2025, and 2025, 26 school years. Okay, moving on to...
We have to approve those.
Oh, we do.
That's a second reading?
Yeah, there are two different votes there, 20.01 and 20.02.
Okay. So can I have a motion to appro, I missed that. Can I have a motion to approve the policies and the school calendars?
No, there's two separate motions.
All right. First, may I have a motion, wait a minute. I'm sorry, we're taking action on the policies though, because it is a second reading, right?
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the policies updated under 20.01?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And can I get a motion to approve the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school calendars under Section 20.02? Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Now moving on to Section 21, New Business. 21.01, can I get a motion to approve the employment contract for Dr. Miller as superintendent effective August 1, 2025 as presented?
Salute.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No? Roll call, please?
Mr. McCartney? Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome back. For an extended period of time. All right, Section 20.02, I'm sorry, Section 21.02, In Lieu of Transportation. Can I get a motion to approve the in lieu of transportation listed on the agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Hooly?
Epstein.
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Motion carries. 21.03, under New Business, can I get a motion to approve the request for Virginia Blassingame as Plain City School District Public Library Madison County, Ohio Board Member?
Salute.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
This happens quite, we nominate all their board members for some reason, so...
All of them?
We actually approved them. I did some research because I was a little confused about this, and who are these people, and why do we say yes, and what is it? And actually, Julie Page is on the board at the library. So I called her and she answered some questions. And they have an application process. It's not an elected position. They receive applications, they review and decide who they want to appoint, and because we are the taxing authority and that they are under, it's statewide, I guess, that we approve their committee.
Who reviews, who reviews their applications and makes them...
They do. It's internal, the board internally. Yes. I was like, oh, okay. She's like, yeah, you just say yes, and we just say who we want, and that's how it goes.
So it comes to us after the board approves, reviews, right?
From the applications, which I'm doubtful are very extensive.
If they ever run a levy, the school board will have to approve that as well, because we're the taxing authority.
Yes.
We have no say really in operations.
Thanks to Perry.
It's an archaic kind of state law thing.
Thanks to Perry.
Yes.
Plain City becomes a city, I'm not sure that we have to be the taxing authority.
Not sure.
I'm not sure. I thought I heard that at one point.
But Virginia has been on the board for a number of years, as well as other notable members of, and they actually have an opening, anyone interested in being a board trustee for the library, and it's a seven-year term.
Wow.
That's a big commitment.
It is a big commitment. And not, like, not the best-selling point. You could've left that part off.
Transparency, I guess.
All right, well, thank you, Erica, for your work on that one. Roll call?
Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes. Motion carries. 22.01, the next regular board meeting will be Monday, February 12, at the Jonathan Alder Junior High School, starting at our regular time of 5:00 p.m. And that is it. Can I get a motion to adjourn the January 2024 meeting of the Jonathan Alder School Board of Education?
Salute.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Volta?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly? Mrs. Detwiler?
Yes.